Mrs. Cochran?
Here.
Mrs. Coontz?
Here.
Ms. Snyder?
Here.
Mrs. Stripmatter?
Here.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Please stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Everyone's here, so no reason for having a motion to excuse. So first, I'm looking for a motion to accept minutes from September 19th, 2022 council meeting as presented and not read, please.
I'll make a motion to accept minutes from September 19th, 2022 council meeting as presented and not read.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmatter?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Next, we're looking for a motion to accept purchase orders from September 17th, 2022 to September 30th, 2022 totaling $77,804.17 as presented and not read, please.
I'll make a motion to accept purchase orders from September 17th, 2022 to September 30th, 2022 totaling $77,804.17 as presented and not read.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmatter?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, council. Next, we're looking for a motion to accept bills from September 17th, 2022 to September 30th, 2022 totaling $163,284.17 as presented and not read, please.
I'll make the motion to accept bills from September 17th, 2022 to September 30th, 2022 totaling $163,284.17 as presented and not read, sorry.
I'll second.
Sam, thanks, Laura. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Stripmatter?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
And next, we're looking for a motion to accept September 2022 DOPS delinquency report as presented and not read, please.
I'll make a motion to accept September 2022 DOPS delinquency report as presented and not read.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Whoever.
Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmatter?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next, we're moving into the reading of ordinance and resolutions.
Resolution number 7202-2022, a resolution proclaiming the village of Lakemore will observe October 16th through October 22nd, 2022 as Stormwater Awareness Week. Whereas communities across Ohio are urging residents to be the change for clean water and take action during Stormwater Awareness Week, October 16th to October 22nd, 2022. And whereas Stormwater Awareness Week offers residents an opportunity to learn how they can take small actions to make a big impact on protecting Springfield Lake. While rainwater is great for lawns and gardens, it can be dangerous for streams and rivers. And whereas stormwater can push common household items such as trash, lawn fertilizer, or paint into local waterways threatening our environment and waterways. Therefore, the mayor and council of the village of Lakemore hereby proclaim the village of Lakemore is observing Stormwater Awareness Week and strongly urges the citizens and businesses of the village of Lakemore to take simple actions to improve water quality and reduce stormwater runoff. Section 1 that the village of Lakemore recognizes October 16th until October 22nd, 2022 is Stormwater Awareness Week. Section 2, during Stormwater Awareness Week, soil and water conservation districts throughout Ohio are urging residents to take one or more of the following actions. Pick up trash in your neighborhood or a local park. It can be a family game to see who can fill up a bag first. Pollution left on roadways, sidewalks, driveways, and parking lots drain directly to our streams and rivers. Check the weather report before applying fertilizer to your lawn or any oil or chemicals to driveways and sidewalks. This will protect the environment and your pocketbook. Make sure lawns have three to four inches of topsoil under the grass. This will reduce runoff as well as make lawns easier to maintain. Plant native plants that have deep roots, which will help break up clay soil and increase the amount of water remaining on the property while benefiting birds, butterflies, and bees. Plant a tree in your yard or install a rain garden. Trees can soak up to 900 gallons of rain a year, and a well-designed rain garden almost entirely reduces stormwater from a property. Stormwater can also erode away streams, which can cause flooding. Each year, conservation districts investigate multiple sources of pollution and assist hundreds of homeowners concerned with stream erosion and flooding, all caused by stormwater runoff. Encourage local businesses to become a water quality partner. Section 3, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council or any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Highway Vice Code. Section 4, this resolution shall go into effect on and after the earliest threat allowed by law. Resolution number 7205-2022, this is a second reading by title only. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the sum accounting of this cost. Resolution number 7208-2022, a resolution approving the police chief to hire Wesley Clifton Rogers as a part-time police officer with the Lakemore Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lakemore County of Summit and State of Ohio. Section 1, council approves to hire Wesley Clifton Rogers as a part-time police officer with the Lakemore Police Department. Section 2, Mr. Rogers will serve a one-year probation. Section 3, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council or any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Highway Vice Code. Section 4, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure in the interest of the health, peace, and safety of the citizens of the village of Lakemore. Therefore, this resolution should take effect immediately. Resolution number 7209-2022, a resolution approving the mayor and village administrator to apply for the 2022 Tree Canopy Restoration Grant. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lakemore County of Summit and State of Ohio. Section 1, council approves the mayor and village administrator to apply for the 2022 Tree Canopy Restoration Grant. This grant is prescribed to support large-growing trees at maturity. Section 2, the application is due October 14th, 2022. Section 3, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council or any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Highway Vice Code. Section 4, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure in the interest of the health, peace, and safety of the citizens of the village of Lakemore. Therefore, this resolution should take effect immediately. Resolution number 7210-2022, a resolution allowing the mayor to apply for connecting communities' planning grant funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study to complete the Spartan Trail and declaring an emergency. Whereas Springfield local schools reduce transportation of students based on State of Ohio minimum requirements. And whereas the village of Lakemore and Springfield Township wants to assist with providing alternative routes for students walking to school from both communities. And whereas the project Spartan Trail Extension is a study to determine how to complete and improve the Spartan Trail to provide a safe alternate route for students. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lakemore County of Summit and State of Ohio. Section 1, that the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for connecting community planning grant funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study for the following. The Spartan Trail Extension Study to serve the students of Springfield Township and the village of Lakemore. The request for funds is $40,000. Section 2, that the village of Lakemore acknowledges and understands the AMAT's funding policy guidelines and confirms to the best of its knowledge that the information contained in the project application is accurate, that it intends to diligently pursue the project, and that a local share will be provided. Section 3, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council or any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Highway Vice Code. Section 4, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, peace, and safety, convenience, and lawfare of the village of Lakemore Council and the inhabitants thereof for the reason that it is to apply for funding within the next 10 days. And provided that it receives the approval of two-thirds of the members of council, shall be in full force and effect and from and after its passage and approval. Otherwise, to be in full force and effect from and after the earliest threat allowed by law. Resolution number 7211-2022, a resolution allowing the mayor to apply for connecting communities' planning grant funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study can deduct Living in Lakemore Sidewalk Planning Study and declaring an emergency. Whereas pedestrian travel is difficult without sidewalks for the community. And whereas the need to improve health and ease of safe pedestrian travel is a priority for the village of Lakemore mayor and council. And whereas village of Lakemore council and mayor have created the Living in Lakemore Initiative that is in need of funding for engineering a sidewalk planning study. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lakemore County of Summit and State of Ohio. Section 1, that the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for connecting communities' planning grant funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study for the following. Living in Lakemore Sidewalk Planning Study. This study will help the village of Lakemore create a plan for locating sidewalks in the community to provide pedestrians with a safe mode of travel. The estimated cost of study is $15,000. The village of Lakemore is requesting $12,000 from the AMAT's funding and is affording $3,000 matching funds. Section 2, that the village of Lakemore acknowledges and understands the AMAT's funding policy guidelines and confirms to the best of its knowledge that the information contained in the project application is accurate, that it intends to diligently pursue that project, and that a local share will be provided. Section 3, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council or any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Highway Vice Code. Section 4, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, convenience, and lawfare of the village of Lakemore Council and the inhabitants thereof for the reason that it is to apply for this funding within the next 10 days and provided that it receives the approval of two-thirds of the members of council shall be in full force and effect from and after the earliest, after its passage and approval. Otherwise, to be in full force and effect from and after the earliest threat allowed by law. Ordinance number 1791-2022, an ordinance to amend ordinance 1336-2003 Employee Policies and Procedures Manual and amending ordinance 1559-2016 by adopting the updated Lakemore Police Department policies and procedures. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the village of Lakemore County of Summit and State of Ohio. Section 1, council agrees to amend ordinance 1336-2003 and ordinance 1559-2016. Section 1.11 Employee Policies and Procedures Manual to adopt the updated Lakemore Police Department policies and procedures. Section 2, a copy of the updated Lakemore Police Department policies and procedures is attached here too and incorporated herein as fully written. Section 3, all ordinances, resolutions, and parts of ordinances and resolutions which are in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Those ordinances, resolutions, and parts of ordinances and resolutions which are not in conflict with any provision of this ordinance are hereby expressly accepted from repeal by this ordinance and shall continue in full force and effect until otherwise amended or repealed by council. Section 4, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure in the interest of the health, peace, and safety of the citizens of the village of Lakemore. Therefore, this ordinance should take effect immediately.
Next, here's the mayor's report. I have a few things to announce with my time. This Saturday, October 8th, is a big day at Lakemore Plaza. The Chamber of, Springfield Lakemore Chamber of Akron is hosting a car show all day Saturday. There's also going to be a craft show up in the grass towards Canton Road, and that's to benefit a family with children who have cancer. So that craft show, the proceeds from the basket raffles and such will be going to that family. There's also a poker run scheduled that day, and I believe that's also affiliated with the fundraiser. And then it's also the library book sale day. So there's a lot going on at Lakemore Plaza, and that's gonna be all day Saturday.
What time does it start?
October 8th, which thing?
What time, like the, when does it start?
I get up there at nine.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
The craft show and the book sale.
Okay.
Yeah, all that's, it's gonna start all day. They have some good food trucks. You know, Bob's Burgers will be there and some others and some music. There's music throughout the day, bands and things, so it should be, it should be pretty fun. And it's very well attended. I think maybe 800 people said they were going on Facebook, so it's gonna be a big thing. I was, I was surprised, but pleasantly surprised. So that's this Saturday. Then, the Lakemore Food Pantry is gonna be a week early this year, October 19th is what I have. That sounds right, right? Five o'clock at Lakemore United Methodist Church. And I would really like to encourage everyone to recycle their paper and cardboard. The cost is down, right? The proceeds from that, that's how we fund our program at the church. And the payments have been really, really low lately. Nobody's paying a lot for paper and cardboard, so it's, it's very, very minimal what we're collecting, even though our volume is up. So please, don't give up on us, and if you have nowhere that you typically recycle, please consider recycling at the lower lot. We have four very large green recycling bins there, and like I said, that's, that's precisely how we fund our Lakemore Food Pantry. So please consider recycling with us if you, if you don't otherwise have a place to recycle. And then at this time, we have some special commendations this evening. I'd like to invite the chief up if you would. He has a lot more to say than, than I do about this situation, but here are four, and I'll let you read them, if that's all right. If you wanna go to the podium or you can just stay on here. Let's go.
On September 16th, Springfield football game, we were advised of a couple people in the visitor stands that were acting suspicious. So Officer Troy gathered together Officer Slater, Officer Uclia, and Officer Soysen. They went to the side, the visitor's side to confront the subjects. And there was two males, one was an adult, one was a juvenile. They both, when they seen the officers coming off the beach, they jumped up and took off. Well, after a brief scuffle, they was able to secure both the people. And inside of the bag that the adult had was the semi-automatic Ruger handgun. Also in the bag was a .30 mag clip that was loaded. So with that being said, I'd like to offer, Officer Troy is here. Here's his commendation. I'll read what it says. Whereas the safety of students, family, faculty, and visitors to the Springfield Junior and Senior High School Football Stadium on September 16th, 2022 was quickly restored due to your diligence and quick apprehension of one juvenile and one adult armed handgun at the Springfield Covetue Football Game. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We were at that game, so thank you.
Just doing my job, man.
Yeah.
Also, there will be a commendation for Officer Shane Slater.
Who was here and had to leave. If he comes back, maybe you can give it to him.
Officer Dylan Uclia and Officer Dylan Soysen.
Thank you, Officer Troy.
Nice job.
Thank you, chief.
Nice job. Thank you. Some scary stuff when you hear it out loud like that.
Sure is.
It's scary, so.
And you guys were there, too.
Yes, I was there with my children, so that was.
And Megan was right over on the.
Right where the scuffle was.
She's like. It's all right. You guys handled it exactly the way that a community was told that the police would handle a situation like that.
That's what everyone who had anything to say about it, so they handled it absolutely perfectly as it should have been handled.
Kinda gives me the.
It does, right?
Kiwi jibis a little bit when you think of how, phew, okay.
That was it for my mayor's report. Thank you, Chiefs. That was excellent. Mrs. Cochran will start with the council report.
The next council meetings will be held on October 17th and November the 7th. Both of those will be here at 7:00. And that's it for me.
And I'm gonna be short and sweet tonight, so we have some festivities coming up this month. We have a costume party, which will be from 3:00 to 5:00 on October 29th, Saturday, that will be here at the municipal building. Normally, we would have the pancake breakfast, and then we'd have a party in the afternoon. We are moving the time up, and the police department is going to be providing like a small concession for children during the.
Fire department.
Or what did I say? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Did I say the, I'm, well, I was just looking at you guys. I'm sorry. The fire department is going to be providing.
Oh, hi, guys. He's back. You wanna, come on in, come on in.
Um, so we're gonna have a trick or treat. It's gonna be from 5:00 to 7:00, and.
You guys are fun.
And we're changing it up a little this year. 3:00 to 5:00, come down to the municipal building. We're gonna have our contest. We're gonna have our bags of candy, and it's going to be a wonderful time. So, and also, if you would like to donate candy, please bring it down to the municipal building. I'm going to post all of this on Facebook tonight. Our, our social media person has been ill, so I'm going to make sure I remember to do that tonight. And if anyone has any candy they'd like to bring down, and that's all.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thanks, guys. No.
At this time, I'd like, Chief, would you mind presenting the certificate up here? I mean, it's, it's live on TV and it'll be on cable. Do you mind?
This might be his 15 minutes, so. Is it seconds? I don't know, but.
Thank you, Chief.
Officer Slater is also the officer at the football game that assisted in apprehending the two subjects with the gun. I'd like to present him with his commendation also.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I don't know if they clapped for you. I can't remember yet.
It's all good.
Okay.
Not the cows, right?
I've been thinking in a minute.
It's for all of you.
Thank you. Okay, back to Anne. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm just gonna thank Spectrum Community Channel 1023 for all their hard work in covering events in the community and our government meetings for the Springfield and Lakemore area. And you can catch their schedule on the Springfield Township website. And they're running a few new things, too. And right now, they're running Friday Night Concerts Dance Fever, Arts Academy featuring Josh Bechtel, Springfield Township Car Show by the Lake, Springfield Local Schools Board of Education meeting, and a Springfield Township Trustees meeting. So thanks again for 1023 for covering our area events. And if, as always, if you know of something, let one of your local government officials know if you know of an event that would be nice to have covered on 1023, and thanks. Thank you, Anne.
John, you're on.
I'd just like to announce that our next council workshops will be October 12th and October 25th, and both of those meets will be at 6:00 PM right here.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I would like to thank everyone that came out to support Spartan Snack Pack last month. G O's Gives Back Tuesdays. We're not sure how much we made because it was a portion of the proceeds, so. But the people that were able to come, we appreciate any support the program gets from the community, so I just would like to thank everybody for that.
So I have a couple things. So first, I just wanna remind everybody, now that the leaves are turning and falling, don't rake or blow any of the leaves or other debris into the roadways or waterways. That could, it just helps to avoid negative effects for Springfield Lake. And, and then I just wanna, just put a shout out. We just wanna keep Carolyn in our thoughts and prayers. I know she's still in Illinois. She's still feeling real sick and happy belated to, birthday to her. She's spending the birthday in, in the hospital right now, so she's our.
She might be watching. Hey, Carolyn, hope you feel better.
Hopefully, because we're live streaming now on YouTube.
She's usually over there.
But yeah, she's our, our social media content writer here for the village, so any of the blog posts, Instagram, Facebook, she's in charge of writing all those and pushing out the good words, so.
Feel better.
We just wanna keep her in our thoughts while she's getting better.
Thank you, Sam. Good. Anything else, council? Tracy, anything? No, Megan?
No.
Okay. At this time, appearing before council, I didn't look. Was there anything there?
Oh, nothing.
I don't think so.
Okay, no one appearing before council?
Nobody wants to talk to us today.
That's okay. I'm cool with that.
Okay, up next, old business. Mr. Stripmatter?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 7202-2022, a resolution proclaiming the village of Lakemore will observe October 16th through October 22nd, 2022 as Stormwater Awareness Week.
I'll second.
Take your pick.
We'll second together.
Any discussion on this? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmatter?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, new business. Mrs. Cochran with two.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 7208-2022, a resolution approving the police chief to hire Wesley Clifton Rogers as part-time police officer with the Lakemore Police Department. But first, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the three reads.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmatter?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Second the original.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Just that we're welcome to have him.
I'm excited.
Welcome, excited, and all that good stuff. Thank you, sir. Okay, no other discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmatter?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay. Next, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1791-2022, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 1336-2003 Employee Policies and Procedures Manual and amending ordinance 1559-216 by adopting the updated Lakemore Police Department Policies and Procedures. But first, I'd like to dispense, make a motion and dispense with the three reads.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Senator. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmatter?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
I'll second.
I'll second the original.
Thank you, Sam. Any discussion? Just, if there's no one else, I'd just like to say thanks again to, to the chief for all the hard work that he does in updating all of our policies and procedures and handbooks and stuff. This is a never-ending job, and it's a thankless job, but it's so necessary and vital for, for our, our community and for our grant opportunities and all this stuff, so we really, from all of us, thank you, chief, for all that you do. And with that being said, we'll call the roll on.
Mr. Stripmatter?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
For the trees.
Thank you, Ann. Mr. Stripmadder, you're up for two.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 7210-2022, a resolution allowing the mayor to apply for connecting communities' planning grant funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, AMAT, to complete the Spartan Trail and declaring it an emergency. But first, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with three readings.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Laura. Any discussion?
This is great.
Yeah, I think so, too. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
I'll second.
Take your pick.
We're on fire tonight.
All right, this is, we're excited about this one. Any discussion?
No.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, it's very cool.
I can't wait for it to be done.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 7211-2022, a resolution allowing the mayor to apply for connecting communities' planning grant funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, that's AMAT, to construct Living in Lake More Sidewalk Planning Study and declaring it an emergency. But first, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with three readings.
I'll second.
I'll second. I'll second.
No, I will. Roll call, please.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
I'll second the original.
Thanks, Sam. Any discussion?
I'll discuss.
Yeah.
Sure.
Please do.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wish from the, let's see, what is this, my 10th year on council, that I would have kept track of how many grants that we've been awarded just since I've been here. We have, there has been so many for a small village, and I appreciate all the effort that everybody puts into these grants, and I wish there would have been some way that we would have kept track, because I think the community would be, and especially more lately than in my first few years, but we have, we really, it's amazing what we have been able to get lately, and I appreciate everybody's efforts, who, Megan, Tracy, the mayor, everybody who works on it.
It's a lot of work.
Well, the chief, both of our chiefs.
Oh, God.
Chief Rhineball, you know.
Absolutely.
It takes a lot of people working together, and it really, even just from the trees to the big things that we get, but.
We're excited about the tree.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's really, I just wish we had that figure, because I think we would all be surprised what we've achieved by everybody working together. That's all I wanted to say.
It takes a lot to write a grant, so kudos to you guys that write it.
Sure.
That's awesome, and this right here is great. I hope we get it.
Yeah, because that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
With more big things to come.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rogers, would you come forward, please, chief?
Maybe. Break them in.
Yes, Mr. Rogers, is there anybody that you would like to hold the Bible for you?
Did you say swearing in or swearing in?
No, swearing, I don't love this.
Hi. Oh, holders, I'm the mayor, absolute pleasure to meet you.
You, too.
So you'll hold the Bible?
Okay.
And it'll go like this, right hand on, left hand up. Yep, chief, you want to come on? Come on, please. Please come up here. Yeah. So this is, yeah, you're good, that's right. This is a Lake More Police Department Peace Officer Commission and Oath of Office, okay? So on this date, you are hereby commissioned to serve as a part-time police officer for the village of Lake More Police Department pursuant to Ohioer Vice Code, Section 737.16. As such, you shall affirm the following by repeating after me, please. I state your name.
I, Wesley Rogers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the village of Lake More.
Of the village of Lake More.
And will discharge the duties.
And will discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
A part-time police officer.
A part-time police officer.
With the village of Lake More.
With the village of Lake More.
Police Department.
Police Department.
To which I have.
To which I have.
Been appointed.
Been appointed.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my abilities.
And that's a wrap. Well, have you signed this paperwork? Welcome aboard, chief. It was a pleasure meeting you. Thank you. Thank you, chief. We got some signatures and things, if you don't mind. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir, tell me where. I'll sign where we tell the chief. Yes, sir. Right here. I guess we could sit down, you know. That's nice.
Welcome aboard. Again, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Welcome to the village.
Yes, welcome to Lake More.
We're so happy to have you.
Let me stand. Thank you. We're so excited. Okay. At this time, I'll make a motion to return to the regular order of business.
I'll second.
Thank you, Laura.
For the purposes of a journey.
Thanks, Anne. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
That wraps it, counsel, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome aboard again. Thank you. Thanks, Rich, for being.